Good evening. Let's call this meeting to order the May 27 regular business meeting of the St. Louis Park School Board. It is 6:31. This is our regular business meeting, which means we take care largely business at this meeting, and this has been approach that we've been using here for, I don't know, how long has it been now, since the beginning of school year?
Yes.
So before we get started, I'm going to read the land acknowledgement. We are gathered on the land of the Dakota and Ojibwe peoples. I ask you to join me in acknowledging the Dakota and Ojibwe community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. St. Louis Park Public Schools also acknowledges that it was founded upon exclusions and erasures of many indigenous peoples, including those on whose land this school district is located. This acknowledgement demonstrates a commitment to dismantling the ongoing legacies of colonial power and the district's desire to support the ongoing work of local indigenous communities to thrive in our schools. All right. With that completed, I'm going to, the next thing on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. First thing on our agenda would be public comment. Do we have anybody here speaking for public comment tonight? Well, it's on our agenda. If nobody's here, then we'll move beyond that. Then we have superintendent's report. We have some discussion items, including an MTSS presentation. We have the consent agenda. We have a number of action items. We have a labor agreement for assistant superintendent. We have an employee agreement with executive director of assessment, research, and evaluation. We have an employee agreement for elementary principal. We have an employee agreement for fourth year probation. We have a motion to forego the reading of individual names of probationary non-renewal staff. We have approval of probationary non-renewal staffing resolution. Then we have the strategic plan and profile of learner. And we have a second reading of policy 409. And then that would bring us up to board member updates and adjournment. So that is our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some.
So move right ahead. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
All right. Any changes, any discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's six zero. Again, just may verify we don't have anybody here for public comment. Okay. There are a number of ways beyond public comment. People wish to communicate with the board, including sending us an email or participating in some of our listening sessions that we have from time to time. Remember, probably the best way to reach out is to start at the lowest level first. If you have an issue in the classroom, start with the teacher. It's in the school, start with the principal, and then move on up from there. All right. With that, I'm going to toss it over to our superintendent for her report.
Thank you. Thank you Chair Cox and board members. I am excited today. I have two topics that I would like to present to you. The first is a video recognizing all of the class of 2025 retirees. So we're going to start there and give a cheers to all of our staff that are retiring this school year.
Oh. What happened?
So thank you to the staff that have dedicated their time and their talents to our students, our staff, and their colleagues, and our family and community. So thank you. Now I would like to invite our high school bar team. This is to the table. So as they come in transition, one of the things that I would like to do, and this will give the board a prelude of what you can, you will be experiencing next year during the superintendent's report, is to spotlight all of the great things that are happening within our building. So when Principal Paddock told me about the presentation that was given at the high school about BAR, I said, can we have them present to the board? So the board is made aware of the great work and the achievement that is coming through our staff and with our BAR students. So I am going to turn the floor over to you all so that you can share the great news.
Thank you, Dr. Heinz. Thank you for inviting us to be here. We're very excited. My name's Carly Kregness, and I am the bar coordinator and a social studies teacher at the high school.
My name is Colin Jones. I'm an English teacher and a bar team member at high school.
And I'm Chris Mullin. I teach high school science, and I'm a bar team member at the high school.
So BAR is an acronym with two Rs, and it stands for Building Assets, Reducing Risks. And this is a program that actually was started in St. Louis Park in 1998. So we have a long history with this. It has been so successful, it has now has its own bar center. It has been rolled out to 350 schools around the country, and it's in 24 different states. And we are really proud to still be leading and doing BAR in this program. BAR is built on two pillars, developing stronger relationships among the students themselves and between staff and students, and among the teachers. And the other pillar is data. So we work to systematize data and to look at all different kinds of data. So grades and attendance, of course, but also test scores, IEP, discipline referrals, mental health, and then things that are, that might go under the radar, that most people don't consider data. But what did we hear kids say? How are they interacting? What are we, how do they look today? How's their health look? You know, just all that sort of anecdotal data that we pull into to help us understand our students better and what they need. Each week in BAR, we have these four components that make up the whole program. So the students each week do a lesson that is either a social-emotional lesson, development lesson, or a classroom community building lesson, or getting to know their own skills and themselves better, those kinds of lessons. And the teachers rotate who does that. And then each week, the teachers meet in teams, and the bar team consists of math, English, social studies, and science in the ninth grade. So the four, those four core, we call them core teachers in ninth grade, share a group of students. And each week, they have a meeting time every day. Most days, they're in small block, and they have one official sort of meeting in small block to talk about students. And then on other days, they have time to do things that we'll tell you about. And then they have one big block meeting where we are meeting with the counselor, the assistant principal, and the social worker. And what I'm building up to is these small block, big block, Community Connect are really an MTSS structure. So in the small block, we're dealing with our Level One concerns, our interventions that support all students, our literacy development. Our big block is our Tier Two, where these are students that need, you know, maybe counselor support, maybe the whole team working together, a wider level of supports. And then for our Tier Three students, we have Community Connect. The teachers don't attend that meeting. That is with, that's more like an MTSS team, that students get referred to that, and then we do problem solving for students that might need supports that go beyond the classroom in the school day. So that's how BAR works. And then we just want to share a little bit of how we're doing that and how well it's going right now. So these are failure rates since 2012 for ninth graders, each semester for ninth graders. And we are really celebrating this year because we've reached our all-time low. One other year, we were this low. Yeah, thank you. We're really, we're really proud. And we're proud of our students, most of all. The percentages are up here. Only 9% of our ninth graders failed a class, and only 3.5% failed two or more. And of course, we don't want anybody to fail anything, but we know that two or more is a really big hurdle. Failing one class as a first semester ninth grader is easier to overcome. So we're really, really happy to see all those numbers so much lower. So how are we doing this? How are we making a difference? I'm going to let the teachers talk to that for a second.
Well, I would just so I don't go over, so I could say so many wonderful things about BAR, but it has been such a critical support for both me and my students, going in my third-year teacher, and this is my first year in the district and the first time being on a bar team. It really has allowed me to better see all of my students this year, and not just how they show up in English class, but how they show up just as students to the school. And the things that we're able to talk about and help them with have been really awesome. It helps strengthen my relationships with them, and it shows me what they really care about and prioritize, so I can better connect that to what they're learning in English class in my classroom. Together with my team, we've been able to identify where students are struggling, and more importantly, where those patterns are. So we're able to interrupt and help. There are many things and circumstances I would not have known as just their English teacher if I had not heard it in a block meeting. And many times, I've been able to modify assignments or contact parents or other support staff because of those interventions. It's really helped us get the students the services they need, and I think it's just a fantastic program.
Yeah, I would echo everything Colin said. I mean, I teach ninth grade and I teach 10th grade. And so in the 10th grade, I see what it feels like to be teaching without the resource of BAR, without this tool and this time, because that's a, that's a shared prep hour where we're meeting with the other teachers who also have this student. And without BAR, it's just really hard to have this consistent, week after week, hey, I noticed this kid seemed like super tired this week. Usually, they're like bouncing off the walls. Anybody know what that's about? Oh, somebody saw in their journal reflection in English that like they had a little something going on at home this weekend. And then we can say, why don't we, you know, maybe we pull that student for a little chat with their teachers? And you know, honestly, like a chat with one teacher is a lot different than a chat with like four teachers who all can kind of, it just, it works really well. And I've, this is actually my first year as a full-time teacher, but I've come from being a specialized para to being a substitute, to being a long-term sub, and student teaching at Roosevelt, and I've never seen so, like such a strong system, for lack of a better word, of just like, how do we make sure we're seeing our, the whole student, not just the data, but the kid? And it's one of the reasons I am excited to be coming back to St. Louis Park. So that's a really good opportunity.
So on the screen are some, there's some data about what that looks like in practice, part of how we've gotten here with these students. And a lot of this, we try to be proactive. Of course, some of these are reactive, but you know, we're trying to do the positive beforehand too with the notes home and calls and emails. And I think that last one is something we feel really good about. We're really getting students referred to those outside services as well as keeping their grades up. So it's, you know, a lot of times, the grades follow getting their emotional needs met.
Can I ask you a quick question about, I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
But it's about this. How do you identify the 85 students, right? Like, is it?
So it's all just what these guys were saying. So we're meeting, well, okay, it's not just that, it's the data too. So we might bring, Chris just gave you an example. Let's say several of the teachers are noticing, hey, this person seems really down, really tired. Let's touch base with them. Let's see if they're okay. Let's check in with them. It can be if somebody's struggling in multiple classes or just not doing work, and we might bring them in to say, let's set some goals, let's work together to help you get back on track. Tell us why you're not keeping up, or you know, do you need, what do you need from us? So it can be our recognition of the data, I mean, our observation of the data, or it can be what we see from interacting with them or hear from them.
Thank you.
Sure?
Just flawed, that's only the ninth grade.
This is only the ninth grade. Right, right. Yeah. So of course, there are many more students at the school that are getting that. And this is just what our group of teachers has done as well in that, so it's half the ninth grade teachers. Yeah. Before we wrap up there, I just wanted to let you know about what we have, what we're building on for next year. We have for the last three years been developing some basic skill building in ninth grade that all the bar teachers then implement. So they're doing planners, we're having them email home to their parents every two weeks, and they CC a teacher on that, so improving communication and various other skills.
That's really one of my favorite like things that we do. Like the students know that their teacher is going to see it, but it also lets us kind of see a bit of the parent relationship or the family member relationship when they respond. It's a really good thing.
It's awesome to see, yeah, parent responses to those emails.
And they're telling their parents what they're doing in school.
Yes.
So we don't have to email their parents as often because we're seeing the email that they've sent from our, from our class. But in the, from moving towards next year, we're working to build out our literacy teaching in ninth grade. And so we have started this process in assessing all ninth graders, and we're systematizing that for next year. But what we're meeting this summer to develop more deeply is a set of shared, agreed-on literacy Tier One skills and interventions that we're going to teach. So if we have, there are a million different ways you can say annotate something, and different teachers are all doing it differently. So we're trying to create a system that our ninth graders can really get good at and share across the different teams and curriculum. So I want to thank you for giving us time to appear here, and I want to thank all the ninth grade teachers and the staff above us. Marley is our social worker. Barb is the ninth grade counselor. Alyssa Gardner has been the assistant principal working with us this year. And then Principal Paddock for supporting us with making it all work in the school. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah. That concludes the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it, and it kind of blends in really nicely with our next discussion item, talking about MTSS, and maybe gets us even hungry for some more ones that might, you know, a meeting next year or something. So with that, let's get ourselves up to the discussion items and talk about, we have Dr. Robinson here to do a presentation about MTSS. So Dr. Robinson?
So as she makes her way up, I'll tee it up for her. So I appreciate the teachers coming and expressing, talking about BAR, because it's really, BAR is using the framework of MTSS. And as I was sharing with our cabinet this morning during our cabinet meeting is, as we really embrace the framework of MTSS, and that's the multi-tier systems and supports, in everything that we do, we are going to be using common language. And so as we use common language, we are all talking in the same, with the same understanding of what does Tier One intervention looks like? Or Tier Two or Tier Three? And we understand that when we talk about Tier One, that is for all. What are, what are we giving to all? Tier Two really identifies that some. What are some of the students needing, that's a little bit more than what they are receiving in Tier One? And Tier Three is what are those few students receiving? They need a little bit more intense support. And we think about that not just in our academics, but also in behavior. So those are the, the conversations and the muscle that we are going to continue to build as we really embrace MTSS and its framework. So Dr. Robinson?
Thank you, Dr. Heinz. Hello, Cheer, Cox, and board members. My name's Constance Robinson, and I am the proud director here at Santa Claus, get ready to say, St. Louis Park, let's go Orioles. But I'll focus on just MTSS. It's an honor to be able to come back into this space to share with you all just updates as to what we've been doing since July 1st. So I want to, before I get started, we oversee, Student Service Department oversees eighteen departments. That is our special ed, our social workers, our school counselors, our mental health, nursing staff, our non-pubs, our school psychs, our ECSC, our care and treatment, McKinney Vento, out-of-school placement, our eighteen to twenty-two program, restorative practices, crisis prevention, Special Education Advisory Council. And there's a number of other areas that I didn't name over five oh four. And I'm saying that because it's not just the seven of us, it's our district staff, it's our principals, it's our parents, it's our students, it's our staff. Our teachers are the ones who are making sure that it's orchestrated in the proper way, but it is, it is all of us. We're one St. Louis Park, so we're doing this together. So, let me move on over here, let's see. Alrighty, so tonight, I'll share with you all what MTSS is. You guys heard a little bit about it through BAR, and how MTSS is being implemented currently here at St. Louis Park. Some of the components that we're focused on, and of course, who's on the team? What did we accomplish? Why MTSS matter? And then, of course, steps to ensure our success. So Christina Whalen, I'm big on research. Her definition is for MTSS is evidence-based framework that is used by schools to support all students with academic, behavioral, emotional, and mental health needs. But it's also for our adults to improve their teaching effectiveness through professional learning, providing resources, and of course, adult wellness. And of course, MTSS is a way of doing to assure every student and staff member receive the appropriate supports that they need to be successful. Okay, so here's where it gets really, really detailed. So for MTSS Tier One, again, it's the eighty percent. And that is the number of kids that we have said, we're gonna do universal support for them. We're gonna deliver the, the academic high-quality instruction for them. We're gonna provide the universal screenings. We're gonna do regular progress monitoring. So we're looking at formative assessment, summative assessments, exit slips throughout the day in the classroom, so that everyone is able to say, okay, I noticed that this is what's taking place with this student, they're on track for this classroom. But then the Tier Two is fifteen percent of our students. So that's a small group of students, maybe ten to fifteen percent of our students who are struggling with some academics or some behavior, or even some attendance areas. So we partner with the same teacher, providing them with the same core instruction, but we're doing a little chunking of it. But then it's that small group, the Tier Three. And that's where it gets really intense, and that's where it becomes individualized. This information or this, this approach is more of, we have our school counselor, we have our school psych, we have our special ed teacher as a consult, and then we have team members to say, I think this is an opportunity for us to focus on this group of kids. And our group of kids are considered those focal kids. Focal kids are the students who are not making that academic benchmark. They have not reached that level that we want them to be at the eighty percent. So our focus is to try to get them into a space where we can partner with the student, the staff members, and of course, the whole, the whole, the whole community to make sure that the student is very successful. So.
Can I ask one question to Dr. Robinson?
Yes, sir.
When you, with those percentages, were you saying that that's percentage of our population, the student population? Or is that the percentage? Can you talk a little bit more about those percentages?
So it's more like, so for our MCA scores, right? And Dr. Lafayette shared with us is like, that's just one data point. But if we're focusing on a kid that's not coming to school, I'm thinking about McKinney Vento. If they're not coming to school, that means that they may not be able to get into the classrooms and do what they need to do to be productive. So we need to make sure that they're in that space. So we're not able to do it right away. It is, I see that you were out, here's the assignment that you missed, and here's the due date, right? And what I would say is, if we look at the students that are at risk, those are the kids that we're looking at. Those are our focal kids. So that is like a, that's the fifteen to five percent, or five to fifteen percent, that's where we are.
Okay, so it is a percentage of population, and that tends to be kind of consistent within, from year to year, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
You're hoping that it's different, isn't it? I just want this basic understanding of what that means in terms of populations.
Got it, thank you, Cheer Cox.
Thank you.
Okay, so here are the four components that we focused on as a district. We met in July, and I'll share more about this. We met in July, and again, this is district staff along with our school leaders to talk about MTSS and how it's being implemented at that time. And it wasn't at that time being utilized or implemented at, at the, all of our sites, it was just one or two. But these are the areas that we focused on, screening, the progress, the multi-prevention strategies. And just to name a few of those strategies that we have in place and that they had in place 2023, 2024, is the restorative specialist that was at each building. We had CPI staff members that were at each building. We had social workers at each building. We had a point-five school psychologist meeting at the middle and the high school. And of course, we had two of our school psychs at the elementary. The database decision-making, again, that was as a collaborative. Everyone was making a decision as to where students should go, but now it was focused on what data points are we starting to look at. We noticed that we didn't have a strong family and community engagement, so we were looking at how do we make that work? And of course, we needed to have professional development that was ongoing so that we can be equitable and equity-centered. So this is a lot that I just shared with you all. But I want to make sure that as I explain who we are as a team, that I seriously defined it. So district level and school leadership, we met in July, and we met in August, and we talked about the learning pitch that we were gonna fall in. We talked about the downfalls. We talked about anticipated responses as to how we need to make sure that we're not going back to what we've done in the past because it didn't work. We understand that it's a new language, it's common language, but this is what we're doing because research has shown us that we need to do what's best for kids. So we were asking the team, who's on your current team? They have built and bolt all these different acronyms, but who would you consider to be on your MTSS team? So that was our gen ed staff, our special ed teachers as consults. Again, our school psychs, school counselors, school social workers, our parent professionals, members from the community, community ed, and of course, our students and our families. How do we make sure that everyone knows their role? And how many, how do we understand and make sure they knew their responsibility? So as we are dismantling, we're reconstructing something new. So that as we're looking at our old systems that didn't work, we're challenging. Okay, we're not doing that. We said that we were gonna look at data. This is the data that we said we were looking at. We said we were looking at our kids' progress. Are we making progress? If we're not, what strategies do we need to implement in the classroom? What is it that our teachers are in need of, the professional development? What does that look like in a chems class, in a English class? What do we need to make sure for our K-five classrooms? Are we having bridges taught from the K-five across the boards? So all these different conversations were happening. But again, there was, I always say, this is hard work, but it's hard work. Because as we continue to see that there's a lot of resistance, we still have to move forward. And we have to remind each other that we're doing this together. So as principals were sharing it with their teachers, and teachers were learning how to implement it, we would come into the space, and I say "we" as district, to support those staff members so that, again, they know that we are all in this together. So this is where I'm excited about the work that we've done. Again, we started this process July 1st. We, July 16, I'm sorry. We began to look at what was working and was, what's, what wasn't working. What do we need to improve in? And we had our team, we still have our team, but we needed to make sure that there were clear expectations. That's the area of growth, right? The universal screening tools, we have those tools, but we made sure this year that the same tools that are taking place at one elementary is the same throughout the entire elementary, from elementary to middle and high school. We started to look at the data cycles. Thank you, Dr. Lafayette and her team, to make sure that there were monthly data cycles that were taking place. And we added, what about MTSS, and how are you guys evaluating? We looked at the decision-making as a collective, so there's not one or two people saying that this should be the place the child, the student should go. It was, let's bring everyone together, let's talk about what this child is able to accomplish in different classrooms, but then also asking the student, where, where do you feel successful? What are some of the things that you've noticed that you're doing really good at, and what can we do to support you? And then the biggest piece is, is just increasing our Tier One support and reduction of the Tier Three referrals, because that was one of our driving forces. So at the beginning, as a team for our Student Service Department, we noticed, we had talked to our administrative assistant to find out how many students were referred to special ed in the 2023, 2024 school year. And she shared with us, there was a hundred and thirty-four students referred. Yes. So that was where we were, how can we decrease that number? So I said, we're gonna shoot high. We're gonna decrease the amount of initial special ed referrals by twenty percent. Twenty percent would be a hundred and seven. That means that all of the work that we started in July, August, we had to keep revisiting. So our administrative assistant and our program analyst, Mrs. Fahy, they set out to go to each site to do a child count, to make sure that our numbers that were in power school matched actually what we were sharing with MDE. As we were finding out that, yep, there were some loopholes, we brought it back to the team to say, these are the numbers, but we also know that we're not doing something. So we went to the non-pubs. We found out that there were students that we didn't count. As we're finding out where the kids were, we're looking at how do we partner with the non-pubs to make sure that they have not just textbooks, but any training that they were in need of as well. After we started to talk with each other, build those relationships with the principals, to come into the classroom and support as not, I'm leading the classroom, but I am here to support you. Tell me where you need me. If it's to bring a kid into a classroom for a timeout, that's fine. If it's for me to go into a classroom to look at how the classrooms are being set up, that's fine. But we also started to partner with 287 because they're called, their program is called Nexus to see, is our, is the classroom that we have, is this a place where our K-through-five students should be in? Is this a place where they can be successful? If not, share with us what we need to do better, because we want to make sure they remain at St. Louis Park. So.
Can I, can I ask one more clarification? Non-pubs?
Oh, non-public school charter schools.
Okay.
Yes.
So we have to support those students as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Even though we're, even though they're not in our buildings, we're supporting the students?
Yes, we do.
Great, thank you.
No problem. Okay, so here's where the success. We were able to expand our new classroom at Susan Lindgren to better meet the academic needs of our students. We redesigned the classrooms over at Susan Lindgren. It took our assistant director six to eight weeks to get it up and settled, because after you built it, again, we gotta go back to make sure that we evaluated. We gotta go and talk to the principal, we talked to the staff members to make sure that it was working for them. We also went over to Aquila to support them with Nexus, to observe and do some observations there, to make sure that our federal study students, that they remain in our district. But then we went to PSI to make sure that our diabetic students had access to do their glucose monitoring, to inform that, hey, my insulin is low. We went over into the Peter Hobart and the High School to just deepen some of the work for our training, just to make sure that they're aware that when we talk about due process, when we're talking about writing down what students are capable of doing it, it's in a way where it's framed as a goal, not deficit. So that was an ongoing training. We went over to the middle school for ten weeks to do a Tier One intervention with the middle school girls because they were at high risk for being suspended. So we're going into the space to make sure we're supporting them. We took the time out to look at, are these well-documented interventions for our kids? Because each one of our students are different. So we wanted to make sure that if we're gonna send a kid from a Tier One to a Tier Two, there has been a process. Everyone weighed in. Again, it goes back to, it wasn't just one or two people, it was the entire team making a decision. The other piece was that as we were making sure, we were looking at different practices, does it align with our current policies? And of course, they do. And I was thinking about the McKinney Vento because we had a influx, we had an increase of students that were, and families that were, they weren't classified as M, as McKinney Vento. But at the same time, it was structured it in a way where if it's considered to be homeless, this is what homeless definition is per federal law. And of course, MDE. So we're just going back to structure, making sure that we define what M, what McKinney Vento is, and of course, letting families know, educating them, this is what McKinney Vento federal law says. So we partnered with a number of outside partners for telehealth. Many of our high school kids were, you know, instead of going somewhere, it was, what's happening at the high school? Nope, we can't get you out there, but there's a room that we set up. We have a phone in that area. No one is gonna hear your conversations between you and that person. Here's the consent from the families, here's the consent from us. Now, what do you need? Twenty, twenty-five minutes. Instead of our kid hopping on a bus, going into one of their program or their counselor and waiting, they were able to get the access that they needed right at the high school. The other piece was, that I'm really excited about, was we actually exceeded our expectation. We went from a hundred and thirty-four, we said our goal was a hundred and seven, it was sixty-seven. We said sixty-seven, thank you, Cheer Cox. We referred twenty, or sixty-seven students to special ed. And I, I have to pay homage to a lot of the district staff, the school staff, the, the Student Service Department, our SOPs, our, our behavior staff, everyone that has a connection with the student. And by the way, Mrs. Doyle is in the audience. She was one of the staff members that we talked about, hey, here's a need for our special education parent. We don't have a handbook, because we use all these different acronyms when it comes to special ed. And people are like, okay, yeah, but they don't know. So instead of us continuing to have those conversations, it is, here are the acronyms, this is what it means, and these are the definitions that you need to be aware of as you're helping make a decision for your child. So Christina Doyle and Mrs. Fahy collaborated, looked at it. I looked at it and explained, let's let the families decide what do they need. And as they, as she continued to craft this new handbook, we posted on the website, and families have been really excited, but appreciative that they, they, they heard something, we heard them and we actually responded. So that was another plus on, on the MTSS process. And the last part is, for this is, is why it matters, right? MTSS is not just for the, the student, it's also for the staff. So as we're growing, I always say growing in grace, we're also growing in grace with our staff members as well. So as we're learning about students that are in need of mental health services, how do we make? how do we make sure that we're keeping our students in the building? It means that we need to do things differently. It means that we need to craft up different plans to make sure our kids get the help that they need instead of walking in the hallways feeling like they don't belong. The other piece is strengthening our tier one instruction. So again, this is new to St. Louis Park. And again, we did a phenomenal job. Even though it was hard work, it's hard work. But we know that we need to strengthen our tier one core instruction so that everyone can speak the common language, but also understand what tier one, tier two, and tier three entails. The last piece is, we are planning to do more of the monitoring with fidelity and integrity. So we're looking at matrix as to if this is a tier one for academics, what academic supports do we need for a reading class, for a math class, for a FIAID, for music? And then of course, getting that buy-in from the different staff members and of course, getting student voice. Another part that's really big, and myself along with Director Howard, is to increase the family engagement. So what we started so far was connecting ECSE staff through, all the way through the eighteen to twenty-two, the transition program, to make sure that we have a communication language, a link, so that there's a newsletter or there's some kind of outlet where our families are aware of what's taking place, not just for special ed, right? It's for our gen ed, our ML, our sped students. Because we want to make sure that if you do have a kid that's in ECSE, there's the same communication that's being shared at a middle school, same communication that's shared at the high school. So we're not leaving anyone out. And of course, it's getting our families' voices. What does work for you? Would you prefer to be in person? Would you prefer, would you prefer to be virtual? Would you prefer to be in community? What does that look like? And so far, people have shared with us that they want to be in community. They want to hear what's taking place. And not only that, they want to know how to work with other staff members that's learning how to work with their kids. So I know I said a lot. I'm excited. I'm trying to keep my energy levels down. But I'm excited about the work that we've done. We know that there's a lot, a lot of work to come. But we have been partnering with MDE and with Bright Works to make sure for next year, all of our principals, all of our new staff that are coming in, they will be well-trained and well-versed as to what MTSSS tier one, two, three is, the different people that they can connect with in case they have questions. So that it's just, it's not laying just on two or three different people, but each and every member that's in our district. So, any questions?
Thank you. Yeah, it's our director, Avery, you have a question.
I came with a lot of questions, but I answered all of them.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm excited. I remember, you know, contacting you with especially in, especially education referral in terms of EBD, it's emotional behavioral disorder. It means a lot of students of color assigned for that. And, you know, very happy to see, we already see reduction in terms of special education referral, suspensions. A lot of things to do about absentees. I didn't, I didn't hear from you absentists too. So like, but one thing's like consistency. So how we ensure consistency, especially in our elementary school, because we have one middle school and one high schools. Because you mentioned here, you know, in terms of universal screening, data-based decision makings and interventions. So my question is how we, how we ensure consistency across all our elementary schools?
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Dr. Abiha King. So this is what we've done these past thirty-seven weeks of school, I think. Our assistant, our, our elementary ECSE administrator assistant, along with our assistant director, they're meeting with our principals, our teachers, weekly. And they're asking about what, what does the staff member need, right? What are some of the needs that are, that you, you know, just take a pulse of your building? What are some of the things that you need from us, from our department, so that we can support you? And whenever we hear that, hey, there's a behavior of this child, the follow-up question is, do we have data? Do we have data to show that this child is, for instance, he's behaving this way in Taylor's classroom, he's behaving this way in Abiha King? If we have that, then we need to go look at what's taking place in Taylor's room, right? So that we can replicate that in Abiha King's. So we gotta give that opportunity for them to do observations. Then it goes back to, I've, I've heard this wasn't working, I, I understand. But did you do it with integrity and fidelity? So if you have classroom expectations where the bell rings and everyone should be in their seat, right? Are you reiterating that each time or often so that each student, the new student or a group of kids that are ML sped or gen ed that they understand? Because if you are, then yes, we need to go back and do some observations. But if you're not, it means as the adults, because we fail. Sometimes we forget. We need to go back to go and say, these are our classroom expectations. This is what we all decided as a class, the students' voice as well, this is what we're gonna do. So when we have the principals and the teachers and the entire team understanding that that elementary assistant director is gonna come and ask those specific questions, we'll see consistency that we're not referring that kid. We're gonna keep that kid here and here are some of the supports that you currently have in your building. So then we might make recommendations. Have you considered your social worker? Because they do small groups. Have you considered your restorative specialist? Because they are able to intervene by doing preventative. Or even consider our school counselors, because they too have that background where they can support our students. So reminding them that you have what you need in your building and then we'll come back and follow up. But that's how we're remaining consistent, to do weekly check-ins, asking five to six questions, but also getting deeper as they find out what's the root cause. Because again, sometimes we forget what we have until we go back and say, that's right, that person has this. We just forgot to, you know, request it. So that's how we're gonna remain it. And of course, going back to look at the data. What does the data show? How is the kid behaving? Or how, how is the, the curriculum being rolled out? Because it's not just about behavior. It could be how we're doing the curriculum, how are we rolling it out for our students? And did we provide the training and the resources for our teachers? So consistency. Thank you.
The other question I had is the family engagement, which is very important.
Yes.
So like, how are the, you know, family engagement about MTTS? I mean, are we transparent with the family? Those who are getting the support, their child with president?
This year, Dr. Abiha King, we've been very transparent. We have shared where families had requested, you know, we need someone to come to a meeting, right? We need to understand what, what is this tier one, tier two, tier three system? As we were explaining it, we were giving examples. So your child is, your, your child is ninety percent. Be at school tells us that your child should be in school for ninety percent. Your child isn't in school, they're here probably seventy-five, eighty percent. If you can explain to us the why, we can understand that. But we're still gonna provide you with the different resources, right? And families are saying, I've never heard that. No one has ever shared with me that my kid needed to be in school ninety percent. So that's the law. We also explain with the different resources. Parents are saying, we never knew that there were a resource other than reach out to your social worker. So we're providing them with not just the, the law, but also the resources. And then the follow-up. Did you get a chance to talk to someone about your child's attendance? Yep, I talked to my school's social worker. They referred me to Hennepin County. Hennepin County explained to me, yes, I do need to have my kid, but this is why I'm struggling. So now we have that, we now know that there was a problem. We're struggling because your kid isn't able to make it to the bus at this time because they're not. So we need to get an alarm, whatever it is. But that's the way we're being really transparent with our families, to say, this is not just St. Louis Park, this is a Minnesota law. And this is what we need to do to make sure we're abiding by that. So.
This is my last question.
Okay. You only, you, everyone gets a lot at three.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
I have a last question. I didn't get a chance to ask the bar too. I just like, the bar only, it was ninth grade. So I was just wondering, can we, can the bar implement across two different grade levels? And with the help of MT, MTSSS, right?
Yeah. Are you saying the BAR program?
Yeah.
I like BAR. Because it, some of the, some of the things that BAR offer, I think is really, is valuable for a ninth grader, right? Because as you go into sophomore year, you get, you become more independent. And you start to share that information with your family and of course, the school is sharing it as well. We can continue to partner with the high school. I'm thinking about middle school. Middle school.
Yeah.
Oh, we're, we're partnering, so thank you. So for next year, we are partnering with the middle school just to ensure that we have like a program in place for our students to thrive. So there's two, well, there's one currently that Principal Kalanowski and I have been talking and working on. But it's about, how do we make sure that our kids, we're being preventative? How do we make sure that our kids are able to receive the academic behavior and social, social and emotional support? And that is partnering with different organizations that are right here in the St. Louis Park, the Hennepin County. So we are in the process of partnering with them. And I believe for the middle school, it's gonna be successful because we've started to look at that way in January, to say, this is what we need for the 2025, 2026 school year. So it may not be BAR, but it's something that's close to it because it still holds the same pillars, but it's also going back to our mission, vision, and core values. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, yeah?
Excuse me. So thank you for this. This was wonderful. I loved hearing about the handbook and bridging that gap for the families. Two-part question. So you still have a goal here to increase family engagement. How do you suppose you do that? And then the second part is how families that are listening, how can they increase their own engagement? How, how can they support, what do, what, who do they reach out to?
Who? Thank you. This is exciting because that's something that we're gonna continue to work on. Currently, we are, again, we, we started with, I reached out to the ECSE parents, right? And explained to them, this is our program and this is what we're asking for, from you all. What would you like from us, right? So again, it's reciprocal. You want, we want. And then it went from, let's move from the ECSE to, let's ask those kindergarten through fifth grade principals, who are their PTO staff members? Who are their presidents? Let's connect with them. And then of course, going to the middle school, Principal Kalanowski, who's your PTO? And then of course, at the high school and then at Transition Plus, getting all of those families there, email their contact information to say, this is what we're looking at for next year. We would love for you all to tell us what those monthly workshops look like and how often we should be meeting. Should it be twice? Should it be in person? Should it be virtual? But also what are some of the topics? And then the other piece is, we're putting it in because again, part of special ed is you are the unique needs. So we're looking at multi-language learners, right? So we're putting everything in multiple languages. And then we're looking at Braille. We're wanting to make sure we reach everyone. Then of course, it's not just the email, it's a robocall, it's a newsletter, it's actually knocking on doors. We've said that we were gonna start doing that in March. We started doing that in March thirty-first. And we've been doing it because we know that some of our families would say, I don't want to come into the school, but I'll be able to do it online. So those are two of the ways that we've been working on it. And parents, if you're listening, it would be nice for you all to just share with anyone that's at your child's school, that's in our student service department, to say, hey, I heard Constance at the board meeting. Is it possible for you all to share her contact information? Then we will share how they can get involved. Because again, we're here because of the kids. So, yes. Thank you.
As the, may I ask on to intermediate district 287, a thing that I never want anyone to hear from a presentation like this is that we're trying to reduce referrals to special ed or to 287 because it saves us money. Because that is not why, right? And that's, it's really important that we say that because we're in an era of budget cuts. And so it could be, it'd be easy to look at that and say, oh, they're trying to reverse referrals. That means that there are kids who have needs that aren't being met because they're trying to save money, because that is not why. So can you talk a little bit about why, why we know that a tier one environment or a gen ed classroom or a home district is preferable? When possible? So that we know that it, the, the idea is that we're meeting more kids' needs, not that we're not meeting kids' needs, right?
So, and thank you. Currently, St. Louis Park has everything we need for our kids to be successful. We have speech and language pathologists, we have school psychologists, same with the 287. We have staff members for hearing impaired. We have school psychologists, same with 287. We have setting one, two, three classes. 287 has setting four. Our focus is, we currently have everything we need. We just need to be, build the model where we can actually support each other. Moving forward, that's what we're doing, right? We are looking at, hey, if we have all of the students in this classroom and we have these staff members, let's position ourselves to be in the classroom so that we can provide that wraparound service in the classroom and also decrease burnout. So knowing that if we have four or five, I'm thinking about elementary, if we have four or five students that are non-verbal, we have AAC, the different machines for our students to use. So that, there would be someone from the speech and language pathologist team that would be in that space to make sure, not only do our staff know how to use it, but our students use it, same as 287. When we look at our school sites, it is, what are some of the behavior interventions that you all currently have for that child's bib, the behavior intervention plan? Same as 287. We would go back to say, we can currently use this space in the classroom to support our student. So that's where the tier one, two, and three, it's just going back to see where are our staff, but where's the need? If we know that during, after lunchtime, our students are escalating or dysregulating, what do we need to do? We can do a walk around the building. What does that mean? That's movement. That's an opportunity for us to get the child or the students prepared to go into that next classroom. But it's also building that check and connect. Again, that's something that 287 has. But we currently have it, it just means that as we're moving forward, we're structuring our classrooms and our students where if they're in need of certain things at this time, we're positioning our staff members to be there to be preventative and proactive. So, yes.
That's great. Thanks. And I'm, I'm just super glad to hear that you're working with the Nexus program. And I know itinerants here all the time. And, you know, we say a lot in 287, like I, like we don't want to be in competition. Like we want to put ourselves out of a job, right? So we want, one of our goals, and we've been talking about this a lot on the board there, is how do we get those resources, those skills, the knowledge into our districts so that our kids can stay.
Absolutely.
At, near their homes.
Thank you. Can one of you two, just for people watching at home, talk 287? It's about 287. It's for both. I don't care.
287, intermediate district 287 is a cooperative district. A cooperative district of twelve west metro districts. We split everybody from Oseo all the way around to Richfield. And we cooperatively and collaboratively provide thorough study for special education services, alternative learning centers, and itinerant services that bring specialized, I know, expertise into every, every building in all of those twelve districts and lots of other things. So it's kind of a place where, hey, what do you need? Let's figure out how to, how to make it work. And we have a little bit of an economy, economy of scale on some of those things. So for example, if you have something really specialized, like Braille, right? Like that might be something that a person, St. Louis Park doesn't need a full-time person maybe to do. But somebody, there might be an itinerant staff who goes to several of our districts to do that. So, is that?
Yeah, I was gonna, I mean.
Do it.
Do you wanna add something? And then.
I was just gonna say, there's a, they have a phenomenal deaf and hardening hearing. But they also have a really good, a program where many of our students who are integrating, reintegrate. So it's a plan where you're currently at 287, it's time to come home. What does that look like? It is, it's not one of those, we're putting you back in the sense, we're, we're doing gradually coming back into your school of origin.
That's been, that's been huge over the last. It was not, it was not like that as much when, when I first started. Like it's something that we've been really working on to make sure that we, we understand where we want, we want. That's the goal.
Yes.
That's the goal.
Yeah. And just, and, and I don't think I've ever heard anybody put it in this chart, but just to be clear, this is not like what people would consider like juvie or something like that, right? Like in the days, right, that people would go to be banished off. But it's more, it's about supporting students and helping them succeed. And like you said, even returning to, to a home district. I see, you, go ahead.
We have four regular school buildings. It's their schools.
Yep. All right. And did you have a question?
Yeah, I think, like, Director, you answered most of my questions during. But I just wanted to say, thank you. This is critically important work and extremely impressive how far we've already come since only July. It hasn't even been a year. So thank you so much. I guess one que, question that I had. I guess one que- question that I had, I believe you've already given plenty of examples, but sometimes it's hard to make the connection. Can you give some examples for like what increasing tier-one supports looks like?
Oh, yeah. So it means that, when we increase it, it means we're strengthening it, right? We are revisiting our roles and responsibility because we know that as we get new staff members, as we get new staff members that are onboarding, they may come with new information or information from their previous district. It is, this is how we do things at St. Louis Park. So if the classroom structure is set up where students know the routines, if they have the school handbook, if they're aware as to where to find all of their, the general instruction, that's what we need to see from ECSE all the way up to the high school, right? And it, it is, we need to check that. So the principals and the teachers need to collaborate to say, here are some of the things that I'm in need of for my kid that has diabetes. I don't have this, I don't have this plug for a child. That's a tier one. We need to make sure for that kid to be successful. So it's partnering with them, and then, of course, them, that team reaching out to us. Another example is for a student, and I'm just thinking about what you just said, Annie, was one of our kids who, they just, they just moving a lot. So we need to, instead of having a sit-down desk, there's a stand-up desk, right? Or we can get one of those workout balls where students are moving around. If that's what's gonna help that kid be successful, that's a tier one. Because they just move, this is how they move. This is also how they learn. Another example is training that teacher, and that staff, and that team, that, hey, you got a kid that's coming in, the kid has a 504, this is what the kid is in need of, these are some of the accommodations. If you have a stand-up desk, please let that child be in that space. If not, this is where the student support, support department can come in, we can come and support them. And of course, just doing an evaluation to make sure that it's one of those desks that goes up and down, because the kid probably gets tired. But we're creating that space for the kid to be successful within that classroom. Last example I can give you is just the social and emotional part. People don't realize that social anxiety is not something you see. So it is, this kid belongs in that classroom, and he, she, they may need to be seated, seated in a space where they're not close to their peers, but we don't need to point that out. We just need to have that space for the kid, that's tier one. We just need to make sure that the communication is clear with our staff members, with our principals, with our teachers, but also connecting our parents to say, when your child is in this classroom, here are the accommodations, this is where your kid will be seated, and of course, asking the student, what are your thoughts? So it's always getting that student voice because, again, it's about them, so.
I just, can I, because everybody has asked the questions that I am asking, but now I have a new one. Because, let me just make sure that I understand also, first, I just, I do wanna apply the intentionality and collaboration that is evident in this because from an insider's perspective, like, MTSS is, was a mystery to many staff members, to many, to most of us. And it's a, it's a system-wide thing, like, this is across the country, that we're going to this intentionality and working together and really gathering data. I thought, my understanding of some of the tier-one support goes beyond just the examples that you had mentioned, but also making sure that we are implementing the curriculum in such a way that all of us are collaborating. And let me just give you an example, and you can, please correct me, because I wanna understand this better. So as a seventh-grade teacher, one of the things that I can rely on is understanding what students did in sixth grade and seventh grade in connection to word morphology, right? So if I, as a seventh-grade, understand, like, do, does everybody know word mor- morphology? So that, how you, how a word changes, and it changes the meaning. So like, affable versus inaffable. So one of the reasons why tier-one support is important is that we have this consistency so that as a seventh-grade teacher, I'm really aware of what my students know coming in. Is that still correct? And so if I have a cohort of students who are super struggling with a particular prefix or suffix, then those interventions can be made. Is that kind of my understanding of tier-one support as well?
So when I think of tier-one from the academic lens, it is how are students able to enter into the learning based on where they are? So you may have a group of students that may not know what, what was it, word, revolting, prefix. Prefixes are and how to apply them. So they may need a little bit more explanation before they can jump into the activity. You'll have a group of students, another group of students that they do know what prefixes are. And so they can just straight into, into the learning, into that activity. And then you may have another group of students that are well-versed into prefixes, and now they're ready to create their own words. And it is that first rollout of the instruction, every student has an opportunity to enter and engage in learning based on where they are. So that is that tier one from an academic perspective. The tier-two would be, okay, everyone had an opportunity to enter into that lesson, but we had about 15% that didn't show mastery of understanding after, at the conclusion. So they may need another, a di- a different dose. So how do I group them and give them a little bit more of what they need, a deeper dive, so that they can then show mastery? And then you have that third level where it might be one or two students that just really don't understand. And so they may, they may need to have their lesson deliver, deliver in a totally different manner. So when I think about MTSS from an academic perspective, that's what I envision. It is that first opportunity for new learning to happen. Students are entering at a multiple, where they are through multiple levels, or multiple lenses, or multiple activities based on their strengths. And so, yes, it is important that you know what the students are coming in with, that's why those universal screeners are important, that's why those exit, exit slips are essential at the end of the prior day's learning. So you can have an understanding that next day, how do you need to even engage students in that recall? So when you think about MTSS from that academic perspective, that's what the tier one. And so you wanna make sure, when we talk about that 80%, that 80% is that, that first rollout of that instruction or that activity. You wanna make sure that 80% of the students can be successful in it. If we're not reaching 80%, we need to roll some things back because, one, did we true, to have a true understanding of how each student was coming, what they were coming into that lesson prior to the engagement? Because if I am just going to apply one way of entering into that lesson, that is where you, you'll have your 50% and, and your 40% that are showing mastery after the first rollout. So how are, how am I taking into account those multiple learning styles? Because some students can take the verbal direction and be able to hit the ground running. Some students need that hands-on activity, or that engagement, or that tactile, they need some news, need that kinesthetic to activate those brain cells. So how are you designing that entry point into that lesson for students to be able to hook onto?
So I did understand that, great. So I guess I have an ask, and I, just to, the intentionality and the collaboration is fantastic, and as Director Ibrahim has pointed out, I work in a middle school model, and I believe strongly in the middle school model. I think that it is, I've always loved the bar because as a teacher who is in a middle school model, I recognize how bar can do that. So I just, I hope there's some intentionality in scheduling so that teachers can have that opportunity to meet with each other and have those conversations. And then also, just my ask is just understanding the intentionality with professional learning and making sure that we're supporting teachers as they make these, because what we're asking for is differentiation, and differ- and differentiation is super hard. I mean, like, it is hard to do well all the time, but I think we're getting better at it as a, as a profession, which is good because our student body is changing. And our students, the students that I started with, they're, they're, they're just not the same. And I don't think anybody should ever blame or shame our generation for being different. They are, they just are. We all, I was different, my sisters are 10 years older than I am, I was different than it. Like, that's just the nature of how things go, and I think lamenting the past and blaming children for being different than maybe I was and when I was in school is just not the, not the way to go. So I appreciate, I appreciate all of this, and I'm in the journey with you because we are also implementing MTSS, just understanding of the intentionality behind it in my district as well.
I did wanna just say one last thing, because you mentioned about the curriculum and the professional development. We've been very transparent and vulnerable. So when we say we're gonna do this together, that means we're gonna do some role-playing, that means we're gonna do some lesson planning, that means we're gonna do some critiquing to what it looks like, even with the co-teaching model, we're offering that for next year. But we're also looking at, you know, as we're looking at the data, and we're talking about what did they learn in the fifth grade, going into sixth and seventh grade, I can get on the phone with Virginia and say, hey, I see this kid, can you tell me more about it? Yep, this is how he learned. So now I, as the adult, need to change my learning, my teaching approach? That's the vulnerability because it's been working for me in this way. Because if we're looking at student success, it means it doesn't, again, one size doesn't fit all. So we do need to say, okay, we have a, we have a different group of kids that are coming into our classroom, and I need to set myself up for success so that my kids can be successful. And what does that mean? I need to look at my learning style and make some of those shifts so that I am helping my students. So, thank you.
Questions, comments? I think, I think you started off by saying that you work with, oversee, I think, 18 different departments too. So this is not the only work you're doing, is what I wanna be clear about. So there are other things that you're doing on top of this, and, and we realize that too, and appreciate your work with that.
Thank you.
Because it's, I don't know, this might be going out on them, but maybe the most multivariate part of our, of one of our departments because of all that stuff. There's clearly connections, but some of the work, I think, is really distinct. And, but, but this is a, a nice summary of, of one key area, and one that's very student-focused, and sort of speaks to, I think, our mission, our strategic planning and all of that work. So really do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity, thank you.
All right. That brings us up to our consent agenda, which includes a number of business items, some personnel items, some minute approvals, board meeting moving date, I think, to accommodate something that we adjusted for that we didn't need to adjust for, and some stuff related to Minnesota State High School League resolution. Do we have a motion to, it is recommended that the school board approve the consent agenda with the following business and personnel items for May 27, 25, school board meeting as presented. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Oh, all right. So we got Ann on the, on the motion, and we got Taylor on the second, so. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any votes passes, seven, zero. All right, that brings us up to eight action items, and we have Director Loi, who's gonna be coming up here to be our, if we have questions about any of these items. But before he come, as he comes up here, I'll start to work on a labor agreement for the assistant superintendent. It is recommended that the school board, and we'll do this, and then we'll ask questions, and if we need to, and then we'll do a vote. So it is recommended that the school board approve the new 2025, 26 assistant superintendent contract as presented. We have a motion to bring this forward?
So moved.
All right, so we have that, we have a motion by Virginia, we have a second by Abdi Akim. All right, Director Loi, anything that you want to share about this?
Good evening, members of board, superintendent. We completed the process of going through and selecting the next assistant superintendent. We had a total of 23 candidates that applied for the position. We went through, conducted rounds of interview, receiving feedback from our stakeholder groups, and Dr. Cooper was selected to join our team. We're very excited about this, and Dr. Cooper is coming from Eden Prairie Schools, where he is currently an elementary principal. So what you're seeing tonight is a one-year contract, he'll put, that will put him on the same cycle as all the rest of the executive directors. So that's the reason for the one-year contract. So we're excited to have Dr. Cooper join our team effective July 1.
Right, any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. Number four, I'm not seeing any numbers.
Number?
In the, are you talking about in the actual contract?
Yeah. Yeah, so we actually worked with our attorney to revise the director contract, so it's part of the administrator group. So we do an actual more official offer letter that outlines all of his personal information in addition to that, his step placement on the administrator contract, so it would fall within that salary range within the group, so we can get more details for you at a later time.
I mean, the reason I ask is that Dr. Mobley, la- last time when we were voting, I was having, we were having the numbers.
Yep.
And now it's not there, so I forgot.
Yeah, we're just working through because, again, they fall on the administrator contract. So we did work with our attorney to make some revisions to the director and, or the assistant superintendent and the executive director contracts.
All right, any further discussion? All right, then all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any votes passes, seven, zero. So we have another one for our executive director of assessment, research, and evaluation. It is recommended that the school board approve the 2025, 26 executive director of assessment, research, and evaluation contract as presented. Do we have a motion to bring that forward?
So moved.
Oh, gosh, you guys are, we give that one to Director Ibrahim, and then the second will go to Director Casey. This is exciting. All right, Director Loi.
This is just the standard, bringing this contract here. It was a one-year contract last year when it was brought to the board, and it is another one-year contract to put it on that same cycle as the rest of the executive directors.
All right.
I have a question.
Sure.
Now, I'm glad we, we have the telegraph yet. I still have the same question too, number four.
Yep, again, it's the same thing. All the executive directors and the assistant superintendent are on the administrator group. So we did work to make some revisions, and that's reflected in this contract as well.
Okay, so, last time, also same, last time Dr. Mobley, she was of the same group too, but the numbers was there.
Yeah. We just made some revisions to that.
This is new for this, this round of contracts, as of this round of contracts.
I'm just looking consistent with our three things I want, with this practice.
Yeah. All right, any?
I have a question. Speaking to that with consistencies, I'm moving forward, is this the new?
So for the executive director and the directors, our assistant superintendent, yes, that will be the, and you'll see on the principal contract that will be coming up looks a little bit different, and my goal is to kind of move that to a standard online, or a standard form similar to this one as well. So we just have to work through that next round of negotiations with them to make that update.
Okay, further discussion? All right, then all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any votes passes, seven, zero. All right, we have an elementary principal, and it is recommended that for Susan Lindgren, it is recommended that the school board approve 125, 26 employee agreement for the new elementary principal as presented. Do we have a motion to bring that forward? Oh, Director Casey, I'll second it. And that brings it forward to you.
All right, so again, we completed the selection process for the next principal of Susan Lindgren. We posted the position, went through our standard recruitment methods. We gathered feedback using online surveys, and we also held two listening sessions with our staff and PTO and community members. We used the information that was gathered in these sessions to kind of help when reviewing the candidates and also creating the interview questions to make sure that we were capturing what it is the community and staff was looking for. We had a total of 47 candidates that applied for the position, and we are thrilled to be welcoming Rebecca Bang as the next principal to Susan Lindgren. She is coming to us from Northfield Public Schools, where she currently serves as an assistant principal.
I have a question too.
Sure.
And I'm not sure if I, in terms of privacy, I have to ask it, but I will ask it anyway because the only difference I'm seeing is, like, when I read this, to the link, last year, we hired Peter Harper, elementary, and Susan Lind, the only difference I'm seeing the steps, step eight, and that's the, so I'm seeing different in the numbers.
Yep, so the numbers are gonna be a little bit different because it's based off of years 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 of experience and there's also some language in the principal's contract that allows for us to place principals using some teaching experience within the past. I think it is 10 years. So, it just depends on how long they were a teacher and what they did previously before entering into the principal role that we would look at that experience and place them accordingly.
Thank you for clarification. I'm just thinking in public.
Great questions.
All right. Any further discussions here? All right, then all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any votes passes? Seven, zero. Okay, the next set of que, uh, next set in front of us have to do with something related to probation and, and we have a specific process for one of those. But the first item we have is AD employee agreement for a fourth year probation and we'll bring that forward and then we'll have a discussion here. So, do I have a, it is recommended that the school board approve employee agreement as presented. Do we have a motion to bring it forward? I'll move it. Do we have a second? Aye, Taylor? Okay, that turns it over to you.
So, in the state of Minnesota, the first three consecutive years of teaching, a teacher is considered to be a probationary teacher. In some cases where individuals will complete their first three years, when they come to us, they may have been tenured or received a continuing contract in another district. So, that would only allow for us to do one year of probation. So, in that case, when an individual completes the 90 days of service, if they were to complete the full 90 days, they would then be eligible to have a continuing contract. In this case, we bring this agreement to the board because the teacher has completed the number of days. But as our leadership team has gone through and done the evaluations, there were some things that they saw that they wanted to make sure that we are able to coach the individual and provide some support around that, some of the things that were evaluated. So, in lieu of being non-renewed, we offered this person an additional year of probation to give us the ability to work with them, to coach them and mentor them along to make sure that they can make the needed improvements so that way we are able to offer them a continuing contract next year should it get to that.
Thank you for that explanation. I think this is, might be one of the first times some of us have seen something like this. So, any further discussions or questions for Director Loi about this? All right, then all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any votes passes? Seven, zero. Okay, for this next one, this is the motion to forego the reading of individual names of probationary non-renewal staff. I think this is some state requirement or something that we would have to read the names. But in this case, we are going, we can do this, which is, it is recommended that the school board forego the reading of individual names of probationary non-renewal staff. There is a roll call vote required, so, but first we need to have a motion to bring this forward. Do I have a motion?
Second.
And second. Okay, any discussion or questions about this?
I just want to say that it's very common practice to forego the reading of the names. That's what we do in 287. And last week when we did this, I said, does anybody not do this? And all 11 other people said, no, we all forego the reading of the names. This is very, this is the practice that people do so that we're not putting people's names out there.
Every year I've been on the board, this is what we've done. So, all right, any further questions, comments? Otherwise, then we'll have Director Anderson, our Clerk Anderson, do the roll call.
So, just the last name or...
Yeah, whatever you want to do.
Chair Cox?
I vote aye.
Vice Chair Mancini?
Aye.
Director Williams?
Aye.
Director Abraham?
Aye.
Director Davis?
Aye.
Anderson, aye. Director Casey?
Aye.
And that's seven, zero.
All right, great. That gets us to the next item, which is also going to be a roll call. So, it is recommended that the school board approve, this is the approval of probationary non-renewal staffing resolution. It is recommended that the school board approve the resolution relating to the 2022-2023, 2023-2024, and 2024-25, 2025, non-renewal of the contracts of 14 probationary staff. A roll call vote is required. Do we have a motion to bring this forward? I'll move it. We have a second. Second, I think I heard Director Mancini. Okay, any discussion on this? Okay, then Clerk Anderson will take the role.
Chair Cox?
I vote aye.
Vice Chair Mancini?
Aye.
Director Williams?
Aye.
Director Abraham?
Aye.
Director Davis?
Aye.
Director Anderson, aye. Director Casey?
Aye.
And that's seven, zero.
All right, thank you very much, everybody. All right, that brings us to AT, 2025 to 2030 Strategic Plan Profile of Learner. It is recommended that the school board approve the 2025-2030 Strategic Plan Profile of Learner as presented. So, we have a motion to bring this forward. Moved by Director Anderson. Do we have a second? Second by Director Williams. And that discussion and anything that you wanted to offer here?
All right, well, I am so proud to present to the board the final draft of our strategic plan for the 2025-2030 school years. I do have to give thanks to Pink Consulting for their facilitation of all of our listening sessions, all the data analysis, all the individual conversations, group conversations that led us to the final draft of our strategic plan. I want to thank all of our district leaders, our administrators, our teaching staff, our parent staff, our students, who are also part of the listening sessions and provided feedback. So, what we have before you is our mission, our vision, that has been tweaked just a tad. We heard from our community members that one of the things that they felt was missing was the focus on academic excellence. We will not lose our voice when it comes to our racial equity transformational work. It is through being able to see the different identities of our students, including their racial ethnicity, and also the intersectionality of other identities that each individual brings with them as they bring their full selves to our district. And what this acknowledge is that we will center the each of our students, the each of our staff members, and the each of our families. One of the things that I am really sitting, sitting with is that we will, we will live out our core values. So, you will see that our core value headers are the same, but we did make the explanation of what that looks like a little, a little bit more palatable for people to understand and be able to see in action. So, that gives you our mission, vision, and our core values. On the backside, on page two, you'll see our commitments. So, these are the things that will be our guiding light in everything that we do within the next five years. And so, we have three commitments. The first one is that we are one St. Louis Park. We are removing the barriers of isolation and pillars that most districts tend to operate in. We are going to be a very collaborative district. We are here, I told Cabinet, we're going to adopt the Amsterdam thing of, how can I help? And so, we will be reaching across multiple departments, multiple sites, so that we can help each other as we continue to cultivate that thriving, inclusive, and empowerment for our students. We will encourage a unified leadership and across departments and through cross-department collaboration and strengthen the transparency and community pride and a full engagement of our stakeholders. Dr. Robinson talked about our family engagement. We are really going to hone into our district family engagement, district family engagement plan, which each site will begin to develop, develop their school site family engagement plan that is aligned to our district family engagement plan, which is aligned to our strategic plan. You're going to hear that a lot from me. It's about alignment. And one of the things that we are going to be intentional about doing is ensuring that everything that we do within St. Louis Park Public Schools will get us to the whole, the full actualization of our strategic plan. Our next commitment is the investment in our staff and to transform our student outcomes. We will begin to build a deeper legacy of academic success in truly becoming that destination district, not just for students and their families, but also for staff. We will advance our equity and excellence through professional development. The community members, families, teachers will, we're going to engage them in some conversations around our calendar. Because in my perspective, I believe that our calendar prohibits us from bringing our staff together as one unit in whole learning. You've heard from multiple design teams that talked about the importance of being able to collaborate with each other. We currently only have two days throughout our school calendar year where all of our teachers are freed in order to engage in learning together. And we need to do a better job of creating space for district-wide collaboration horizontally and vertically. But our calendar inhibits a lot of that work from happening. So, we are going to be engaging our calendar committee and bringing our stakeholders together to really look and have some tough conversations about the days off. What makes sense? How can we have more K-12 days with no students, but staff are free to do some professional development and more collaboration? That allows them to dive deeply into their, their student data and have those collaborative conversations with each other to be able to really work within a high functioning time through that MTSs framework. So, we will be looking for opportunities and our, also our, our master schedules will allow that. We kind of began that impetus especially at the elementary for next year for that common prep time and that for grade levels, but also for our specialists to begin that collaborative time. And as we transition from a seven-period day to a block schedule, block schedule at our secondary, it will also allow for that deep-end collaboration, common, common time to prepare and work together. Third is our commitment to building trust and community. A common theme that came, that resonated through this time as we began to learn more about our needs within the district is that communication. And I will say that the communication that was coming up is not just within our communication and marketing department. It is how are we communicating with families on an individual basis? How are we communicating with families when it comes to the opportunity and resources that we have? Thank you, Dr. Robinson, and the special, the student support team that created a handbook for our, our families that receive special services so that they have a better understanding of the language that we are using. So that we are now working with our students and our families as opposing, as opposed to just working and working, putting work on to our students and our families. So, having that communication loop is also important because we do a lot of communicating to our families, but we also need to be receptive of the communication, communication flow back to us so that we can be better servants to our families and to our students. So, you will see that this is very, very clear, clearly articulated through our strategic plan one pager. Also, any questions in regards to the one pager?
No question. I know, like, you're doing it, but just, we are having multi-language side, right?
Yes, absolutely. So, all of our documents will be translated, but this is for the board so that once, once it's approved, then we can get into production of translation and branding.
Yeah, my advice is don't use Google.
Duly noted. All right. The next document that I'd like to share is our tri-fold. So, this will be a tri-fold that we will have at tables when it comes to meetings or any publications that we share. So, it will have our land acknowledgement, our mission, vision, core values is centered, and our commitment. So, this is just a, a tri-fold version of our one pager. So, when it comes to materials that individuals receive, especially when, if they are interested in learning, joining our team here, this would be our marketing materials. So, because I believe that it is very important that as new staff come to our district, they have an understanding of who we are. So that they, when they say, yes, I accept this position, they are saying, yes, I am accepting the responsibility of ensuring that I am a part of moving the district forward to actualizing our strategic plan. So, that is another handout.
I think, I know we aren't quite there yet, but that, to me, looks like a perfect thing to be hanging in the boardroom when we get our board.
I love that Oreo. I am obsessed with that Oreo. I love it. It's so cute.
So, in our process, we did have, we had some lockups of some different Oreos to help with the branding.
That's slick. I don't think anybody says slick anymore, but I'm going to go ahead and say that that's slick.
Bring it back. All right. And lastly, we have our Portrait of a Learner. One of the things that I think I wanted us to really be able to articulate to our community, to our families and to our students is what type of experience are students going to have when they attend St. Louis Park Public Schools? And when we think about creating a learning environment that allows students to develop into their each, these are the things that we want to ensure that we are guarantee, guaranteeing in a student experience, that our students, our learners are authentic. They are, they are strategic. They are connectors. They are empowered. They are nimble and they are dreamers and innovators. And so, the, I do have to give homage to, Tom shared this, the ASCEND acronym with us because it was work that was, that they were beginning to develop prior to COVID. I'm looking for Tom for the head nods. And prior to COVID, we, we wanted to make sure that we weren't starting from scratch. This is work that was already being done. And a lot of, a lot of great things were happening prior to COVID. And sometimes when you have a pandemic, you kind of lose your way. And so... I mean, there is, there are a lot of pandemics, but you know, this is one that we currently experience.
Right, exactly. That's what I...
And so...
It was an unusual circumstance.
It, it was very, you know, jarring and you know, sometimes it's, I, yeah, I don't know. It was...
Yeah.
Anyway, but we wanted to make sure that we didn't, we didn't lose any of that work that had already been done. So, what we did, what Pink was able to really become creative with the ASCEND and highlight how it's still, those, this, all of these... and highlight how it's still, all of these identifiers are still relevant. So we adopted this. They articulated and kept it aligned to our strategic plan and the things that they heard during the listening sessions. So we have our ASCEND. Any questions?
I love nimble. Cornelius Minor is another middle school teacher who's just a rock star. He's just, I have such a professional crush on him. And he always talks about how teachers need to be nimble in this time period. And I like that nimble instead of like flexible. It's a good group. Or I guess it's an adjective. I'm an English teacher.
Other comments, questions? I think I've
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I just wanted to say I was a part of the core strategic planning. What do you call it?
Core planning team.
Core planning team, yeah. And I guess some of the things that I noted, that team was made up of like community members, parents, teachers, staff, cabinet members, and students as well. And I'm impressed by how much of their feedback is in this final product. So I do want to thank Pink Consulting for, I mean, it's not only that group, but also like listening to the community and how much feedback they took in from so many segments of the community and how intentional they were in seeking that feedback and how it is, I think, reflected in this. And the thing that I most appreciated from the core team at least was just like how much pride everyone had in our core values as they stand, like around racial equity work and each student living their brilliance and the student voice and community-focused. And so like, there are some commitments in here that reflects like an ongoing work that we're doing, but it's really around the same core values that we've had in the past and I think that the community really appreciates. So, yeah, I'm excited by what we've come up with and by what Pink Consulting has helped us come up with.
Other comments? I mean, I'm appreciative that we sort of are required to look at this every few years anyways because it does mean like let's not just keep going with what's been going. I think as we heard Dr. Robinson, as we've heard from others, it's been nice to do that. I've heard compliments from the community about Pink Consulting and people felt that that was, they were a great organization. They felt heard. They felt like things were reflected back in a way that seemed fair, that what they did say was reflected back to us, whether we wanted to hear it or not. And just appreciative that we have something, you know, here to look at. And I'm appreciative of my fellow board members who have participated and those of us who have said like, yep, we're not gonna get into this real deep because this is what we're hearing from the community. We're hearing from our staff. And we have our opinions. We have our thoughts here about deflect those muscles in other ways, I think, too. So any other comments, questions, otherwise? We've had a motion and we've had a second. So all those in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass at seven zero. All right. That brings us All right. So that brings us up to policy development. Second being a policy for nine, play publications, instruction materials, interventions, and creations. This recommended that the school board approve policy for nine, play publications, instruction materials, interventions, and creations as presented. Do we have a motion to bring this forward?
So moved.
So moved, okay. Sorry, I didn't hear that. Second? All right. Second by Director Mancini. All right. Discussion.
So can I just do a little discussion here? I did reconfirm this with Dr. Heinz, but we had a policy committee meeting. This was a big portion of what we talked about. This is a new policy for our district. And it builds off of the MSBA recommended policy. So this is about like copyright and use of copyrighted material and proprietary rights and materials created by staff. So I think, and Taylor, if I'm doing it correctly, if I'm wrong, but Dr. Heinz and I both, our memory is that we're actually not asking folks to vote on this today. We're bringing this forward because we want to, we did have a first reading on this. I want to be clear, we did that. But we want to provide an opportunity for folks in our community, particularly our school staff, who will be most impacted by this policy, to reach out and express their thoughts and ideas about what's in here. I do know that a lot of work went into this by our district leadership, looking at not just the MSBA policy, but best practice policies from other districts around. And so Dr. Heinz can talk a little bit about that. But this is a really important policy. You know, we have to abide by copyright law. And so this contains a lot of federal definitions of copyrights, you know, cites to the federal U.S. Code, where this law resides, and really sets up some very specific requirements about following copyright law. And so because this is new to our district and because we are allowed to do multiple readings, we don't have to pass it at the second reading. I don't have any recommended changes. Usually if we're going to a third reading, it's because somebody's recommending something that changes. But when we met, what we really felt like was our community, our staff deserved a chance to really hear us say, hear me say, as the chair of the policy committee, this is a policy that we intend to move forward. If you have thoughts about this that you wish to share with us, you know, please reach out and do that. And we are going to vote on this in the last meeting in June. So that's
I think also, I mean, the copyright is important, but it was also an issue of data privacy and making sure that the district was putting measures into place that inadvertently, that no student data would get taken and inadvertently used or show up at another location. So I also appreciate all the work that went into this because I think I made a stink at the first reading of it. And then, so I really appreciate the efforts that went into defining the terms and looking for, because I think that like, as a teacher, I didn't know that this policy existed and it's on the books. And if we had just accepted the MSBA version of it, we're sort of putting teachers who are doing a lot in their classroom, taking their creativity and things like that. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
So for folks who are looking at it, the MSBA version is what's in red. And then there's crossed-out lines for the portion of the red that we removed. And then the blue is not in the MSBA policy, but is best practice from other districts in here as well.
And I think just to follow up on what Director Mancini said, I think the core reason of the reframing of language is to make sure that our, the core principle of student privacy is like the key piece of what we're striving to achieve with this policy. And I guess I would just add, I do have a grammatical error that I noticed that we could send to a third reading anyway. But I do think it is important that the community has a chance to weigh in on this before we finally do pass it. And I can mention now or I can send the details, but I think in section four C, I want to say, I think it says
It says comprise.
Comprise rather than compromise.
So how do we do it?
I was gonna, I mean, so, well, before we get to that for one second, I just want to say that the intention here is because previously we had shared this in a study session. And so it was helpful for people to bring that forth. And you were saying that you made a stink, I think you asked questions, which was a bright thing to do in a study session, which then to bring it to this brings it to a business meeting. So it's visible. It's more visible to all. So I think that was the intention here. Okay, so setting that stage first. I think that we can simply, we've had a motion to bring it forward, but I don't know that we have to do anything special to just remove it or do we have to vote to table it?
I think it's a vote to table it.
A vote to table it. So
So I can vote to table it then?
Yeah, okay. So I think we can just do that. We're gonna move to table this into a later time. So whatever, the correct answer. So we have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion on that motion? Okay. So then, all those in favor to move this to that last business meeting and of the year, which is June 24? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass at seven zero. Okay. That brings us up to board member updates. Who has a board member update for us?
Well, I just want to say thank you to our St. Louis Park State Legislatures because in the final hour, we got the ability to start before Labor Day, so.
Well, it's not in the bill.
Oh, it's in the bill. It hasn't passed the bill yet. So I thought it did.
Just in the House.
Just now. We need to reach out to our state legislatures.
How about we reframe that? I mean, we can say, we appreciate the efforts of our legislators because they were instrumental in particularly in the House and moving that forward. And it proves that we've been heard. So we appreciate that. We're still waiting for our legislature to find and that is frustrating for us because it means there's a lot of unanswered questions. Okay. Other board member updates?
I'm not gonna apologize for being late because I'm not sorry because I was at the intermediate District 287, first ever and first annual senior celebration sponsored by its American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. So we got to have a little ceremony and celebration of not just the graduating seniors, but some of our other students. And it was just really wonderful. So I'm sorry, I missed the beginning of your presentation, Dr. Robinson. It was a good cause. And second, Lenox is sponsoring a senior resource event for any seniors in our community at Lenox on June 10th, 1:00 to 3:30 p.m. It is a free event. There are more than 45 vendors who are gonna share valuable resources for seniors. It's everything from like the fire department to senior living facilities to healthcare-type things, just a huge array of things. It's kind of an open house. There's gonna be some breakout presentations and there's prizes throughout the day. So mark your calendars, June 10th, 1:00 to 3:30 p.m. at Lenox.
And what does the senior center describe as a senior?
Oh, 50 and better.
50 and better.
Yes.
I know that's hard for some of us who are already 50 and better. But anybody, I think, really, I think they try to say, like, really?
Anybody who's, especially for something like this, anyone who's a senior or who is supporting a senior in our community, who's a lot of us, very welcome to attend this event.
Other board member updates?
Yeah, I had a chance to attend one of the, one of the sessions for Mrs. England's climate summit with the sixth grade middle school class. And it was really impressive to see the students. They presented on plastic waste and car emissions. And it was really impressive to see them engage with very serious climate change topics like that. And then Peter Hobart's IV exhibition is tomorrow at 5:30. So I'm planning to attend that and check that out.
I went to the climate summit last year. It was so good. I just couldn't make it this year. Highly recommend it, folks.
I had the pleasure of being an interviewer for the Susan Lindgren Imagination Fair. It was beautiful as always, just seeing the kids excitement around their passion, their interest, sharing it with their families and just having somebody that they have no idea who you are giving you a little gift card, a little snack to go get you a treat afterward.
Just also a shout out to the staff that are making it through the last two weeks. It was a challenging two weeks of school with maybe some student behavior that is understandable, but still challenging. So we can make it through to the end and good luck to the senior high school who have finals. I don't think that they have finals at the middle school, but good luck to the students going into finals. It'll be fun.
I got an earful this week from my high school student about this last week of school. They're feeling it, right? They're ready to be done. And so I give them, you know, I hope they have the patience to do it.
Oh, and the bilingual steel. That was amazing.
Yeah. There's been a number of things in our community here.
Was it when we first joined the board for the bilingual steel? I think it was like six kids and this was over 100, right? That is outstanding.
I did not attend. There was a Dollars for Scholars event that I think was, went over really well. I've attended that in the past. It's long, but it's so interesting and because it is hearing about so many great students and people who are willing to put some effort towards supporting our students. And that's huge, I think. There's over, like usually, 100 students, right, that receive some sort of scholarship for any number of things. And sometimes it's just proud alumni
Yes.
that have sponsored things and stuff. So I just, that community spirit and people continue to look for something, how can I support our schools? I can't give any more of my tax dollars. Here's a great way and that you could be investing in our community too. So really appreciate that. Which brings me up to the item two is that after Lenox board meeting, we will have gone through graduation. Graduation's coming up and that is an opportunity for us as school board members to get to interact with each of those students. It's just a joyous opportunity. And I know that we have some changes this year in venue and stuff. But I'm guessing that they'll probably record it somehow and make it available maybe or something to see. Do we know that? Do we know if it's gonna be recorded?
Live stream?
Live streamed or recorded, the graduation?
Graduation.
Yes, I'm working with the university.
That would be wonderful. And we'll understand if it's a challenge, but we do appreciate it because I'm telling people, you gotta watch our graduations. You gotta listen to the student speakers. You gotta just, even if it's just watching for two minutes of the kids accepting diplomas, the smile on their faces, it keeps me going for another year of school work for sure. So with that, if there's nothing else, and I will call this meeting.